End open session, that all council members are present. Councilmember Rick Adeli will be here shortly. Item one, our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration and action resulting in the executive session. Personnel appointments and reappointments. Item A, Building Standards Commission.
Mayor, Councilman Rick Adeli has the list.
Oh.[48.01][48.01](Laughter).
Requesting to table for approximately two minutes.
Defer, defer.
Was it Peter Kraus stepping down and Ed Ackland? Oh, there he is.
Sorry, sorry.
Make that one minute, Mayor.
Okay. If you don't mind making a recommendation for the Building Standards Commission, reappointments.
Thank you, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williams and I have conferred, and we would like to reappoint Ed Ackland, leaving two vacancies. And I'll make that a motion.
Second. Thank you, Ed. A motion, second, to appoint Ed Ackland with two vacancies. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, motion passes. Item three, Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan Briefing. Dr. Ron Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Muns and Council. I'm Ron Smith, your Parks and Recreation Director. Later tonight, you're going to be calling a public hearing to consider adopting the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Tonight, we have our consultant from Halfan Associates, Ms. Kendall Howard, Senior Planner for Halfan Associates. She's worked with the department for the past several months in these updates. We'd like to turn the microphone over to her, and we will have staff available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. There we go. So, tonight, we are going to present the overview of the Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan update. So, this has been ongoing with the Parks and Recreation staff for the past year. And so, the current plan was adopted in 2018, and it's used to guide the development and improvement of parks, trails, and recreation facilities within Plano. And so, this is a five-year update to that 2018 master plan, and the primary purpose is to update the overall plan, but then also there are related components, primarily map elements, that are also integrated into the comprehensive plan. That includes the Park Master Plan map and Bicycle Transportation map. So, the plan includes a comprehensive assessment of everything that is comprised of the Parks and Recreation Department, including parks and open space, athletics, trails and bikeways, and indoor recreation and aquatics. The plan is updated every few years, and having an updated plan is important, both for accreditation purposes through CAPRA, as well as to be eligible and receive funding through various state and federal agencies for park improvement and development. And at its core, it's a long-term action plan, and it's also important to note that it's not a funding document. This is just identifying the needs and the vision for moving forward. Implementation of all the actions that are found within the park system plan are made with council approval and then funded through voter-approved bonds. So, just looking at some of the outreach, we did a statistically valid survey, so this was mailed to a random sampling of households within the city. We also made those same questions available to the community at large. We also had virtual engagement rooms, so this was an opportunity for people to visit a website and navigate through a room, similar to what you would find in a public meeting. So, we had two virtual engagement rooms. We also used the existing Parks and Recreation Planning Board to serve as a sounding board throughout, and we met with them five times throughout the process. We used various methods to provide update notifications, including the Parks and Recreation website, different stakeholder groups, prior planned participants, recreation members, et cetera. So, we do a lot of analysis as part of this master plan process, one of which is looking at accessibility to parkland. So, within the Parks and Recreation industry, there is a standard of wanting to have every resident within a 10-minute walk to a park. And so, today, about 80% of residents within Plano are within a 10-minute walk to a park, and that is much higher than the national average of about 60%. So, we look at accessibility in terms of accessing parks, and then also a per capita figure. So, today, Plano is providing about 14.4 acres for every thousand residents, which is above the national average, but it falls just short of the city's goal, longstanding goal, of 15 acres per thousand. And the image on the screen there shows the service, general service area for all of the existing parks. And so, that's what our service area looks like today. And here is the draft map, and I'm actually going to place an update here and ask you to pass it out. So, I mentioned earlier that the core map components of this plan update are the Park Master Plan map and then the Bicycle Transportation Plan map, and there's just a few updates that were needed to address consistency between those two maps. So, the Park Master Plan map that's being handed out addresses some agreement issues between both of the maps. And so, the maps provided in your handout supersede the maps in this presentation, and the corrected maps will be replaced in the final Parks Master Plan document. But essentially, this map is showing all of the existing parkland and then the proposed parkland as well. It also shows trails not on parkland, so that really gives you a good sense of existing connectivity between parks and recreation facilities, as well as planned connectivity. And then, this just highlights some of the changes that were made to the Park Master Plan map since the previous version that was adopted with the 2021 comprehensive plan. Some of the proposed park additions are related to recent and ongoing development, as well as trying to fill in some of the gaps in the service areas that I mentioned earlier. So, this overlay just shows where there's existing coverage in terms of access to parks and where we're trying to fill in some of those gaps with these proposed additions of parkland throughout the community. So, in addition to the Park Master Plan map, we also have the Bicycle Transportation map, so this will also get incorporated into the comprehensive plan. And so, this shows all of the active transportation network within the community, trails and on-street bikeways. So, this is, this map shows some of the updates that have been made since 2018 in terms of what's been constructed, as well as what's planned with connecting to surrounding communities, as well as connecting, filling in strategic gaps in existing trail networks. And then, this slide just highlights some of the changes that have been made, again, since that 2021 plan version. I mentioned there's lots of additional connectivity to surrounding communities, as well as filling in gaps and addressing what has been constructed in these past few years. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I did wonder, so you said 80% of Plano is within a 10-minute walk of a park, which is fantastic. I was wondering if we know that number, what percentage of Plano's population, because, you know, a lot of the areas that are not are, you know, up in the far northwest of the city, you know, like near the Legacy Business Park area, where there are not necessarily, you know, very many residents. And so, do you think that number might even be higher if we just look at it in terms of what percentage of residents are within a 10-minute walk of a park?
So, it does look at actual resident.
Oh.
Yes.
I misunderstood that number, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and you bring up-
That's still a great number.
Yeah, yeah, and you bring up a good point, that a lot of the areas that are currently outside of the 10-minute walk to a park have traditionally not been residential areas, so the industrial areas east of downtown and the business park areas in the northwestern part. But 80% is a great number that not many communities are able to achieve.
For sure. That's fantastic, and thank you all for achieving that tremendous number.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is Discussion Direction of Legacy Business Park Sentiment Survey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past several months, we are aware of a zoning case that came through with the former EDS campus, and we've been approached by a number of developers about opportunities for development of corporate campuses into, or redevelopment of some of the corporate campuses. One of the challenges that we have is there's a lot of moving parts out in the Legacy Business Park right now, and we'd like to have the opportunity to go out and survey landowners, as well as some of the developers out in the area, to understand better what they're seeking to be able to do in the business park, and understand from their perspective what would make for successful projects. Now, we understand that that has implications, so what we'd like to do is just do a sentiment survey to hear what they're asking for, be able to bring that back to council for the all, then, to consider whether you do want to take any additional steps. But we think this would be important and meaningful to be able to gather that in a summarized form for council, then, to look at, consider, and then possibly look at what future steps you would want to take.
Sounds good. Any concerns?
All right, we'll move forward.
Next item is Consideration of 2024 Council Meeting Dates and amend November of 2023 Meeting Dates. Mark.
Mayor and Council, we are going to be heading to, we are going to be heading to Emmitsburg, Maryland, to do some FEMA training. As a council and as a community, we will be inviting some community members to go with us. This is important emergency management training and shows some opportunities for quite a few tabletop and team exercises for situations that require emergency management. In order to do so, we were, we've been applying for the last several years, and we were assigned a timeframe that would impact that first meeting in November, so we would like to adjust the schedule to Tuesday, November 7th as the meeting date. Additionally, the meeting schedule for 2024 is also listed within this, but we think that this would work with the calendars that we're aware of.
I will not be able to attend. I'll be out of town that night.
Okay. I'll be here.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Item six, Consent and Regular Agendas. Any item, someone would like to remove a consent agenda?
Item A B, the, I'll be recusing myself. A B, the Economic Development Initiative Agreement. With CoreWeave, yes, indeed.
You're just recusing.
Just recusing myself, yes, yes, indeed.
All right.
And Mayor-
Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'd like to pull items A D, A E, and A F for individual consideration.
Let's say it one more time.
A D, E, and F.
Got it.
For a single discussion, if that helps.
All right. Any items for discussion or future agendas? Look at that, look at us. We'll take a recess and return at 7:00. I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened in an open session, that all members are present. We will begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Rabbi Block, with Shavah at Plano, Collin County, and the Pledge of Allegiance, and Texas Pledge led by Councilmember Williams. Would you all please stand?
Thank you for having me here today. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, Council Members, and Employees, for all your effort and work on behalf of this city. Thank you to the citizens that are here today, who have come here to share their voice and participate in today's meeting. In a city council meeting, not everyone agrees on everything, and what would you know, sometimes there might be a difference of opinion. So, I would like to share with you a teaching from the Mishnah, written by the Jewish sages 2,000 years ago, in Pirkei Avot, Ethics of Our Fathers, Chapter 5, Mishnah 17, and I quote, "Any dispute that is for the sake of heaven is destined to endure; one that is not for the sake of heaven is not destined to endure." When we disagree and argue, but it is for the sake of heaven, it is an argument on how to make our portion of this world a better, safer, and more godly place, then this is an argument that will lead to results. If however we argue, only to protect our ego, and only disagree to further our own career and ambition, then this is an argument not for the sake of heaven, which will not bring us to resolutions and results. Master of the universe, I pray that you give wisdom and understanding to our city leaders and fill them with humility, that their meetings and decisions will yield results that are for the benefit of all Plano citizens and for the sanctification of your name. Master of the world, please keep all of Plano safe and healthy, and let there be friendship and love between its people. To conclude with a well-known, short Hebrew prayer, "Hoseh Shalom Bim Romav," He Who Makes Peace on High. May He bring peace upon all of us, and let us say, amen.
Please read me the pledges of the flags of the United States of Texas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Be seated. So, tonight, we have an opportunity to read a proclamation. July 26, 2023 is the 33rd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'd like to call forward Caleb Thornhill, who's Director of Engineering, and Andrea Park, Engineering Compliance Manager and ADA Coordinator. The proclamation reads, Americans with Disabilities Act 33rd Anniversary. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, or the ADA, was enacted by the 101st United Congress and signed into law in July 26, 1990, by President George H. W. Bush, in order to establish a comprehensive and clear prohibition of discrimination on the basis of disability. Whereas the City of Plano reaffirms its ongoing commitment to provide inclusive access to policies, programs, communications, and facilities to all individuals. In recent years, the city has invested nearly $20 million on new and existing projects to improve accessibility in Plano in the way of substantial enhancements to our trails, sidewalks, and ramps, playgrounds, programs, and closed captioning services. Whereas throughout the year and on ADA anniversary, the City of Plano recognizes and celebrates the 33rd anniversary of this landmark event and the important work of promoting equal opportunities for people with disabilities. Now, I therefore, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, do hereby proclaim July 26, 2023, as Americans with Disabilities Act Day in Plano. I do thereby encourage all citizens to join me and the Plano City Council as we embrace our diversity and commit ourselves to providing people of all ages with equal access to many wonderful things, the city of excellence. wonderful things the City of Excellence has to offer. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We have a presentation that I know all of you are very proud of, and I certainly am very proud to be able to present this honor to those that went above and beyond the call of duty. The Tom Mullenbeck Recreation Center staff members are being recognized for their rescue efforts. I'd like to call forward Timothy Sutherland, Owen McSpadden, Amir Hindawi, Ethan Lee, Brianna Coleman, Morella Adele, Michelle Alvarez, Grace Fairley, Nicholas Mendoza. If you'll all come down. While you're coming down, let me tell you a little bit about what these fine folks did. On July 27, while exercising in the lazy river at the Tom Mullenbeck Recreation Center, Timothy Sutherland suffered cardiac arrest and slipped beneath the surface of the water. Facility aquatic staff followed their training protocol perfectly to provide lifesaving care for Mr. Sutherland. Staff performed a water rescue and removed him from the pool, where they conducted a primary assessment and found no breathing or pulse. Staff then applied an AED and administered CPR. CPR continued until Mr. Sutherland showed signs of life. When Plano EMS arrived within five minutes, Mr. Sutherland was breathing. Plano Parks and Recreation staff regularly train and prepare to respond appropriately to medical emergencies in the pools and rec centers, and this positive result is another example of the importance of that extensive training. Another life has been saved. Let's give them a round of applause.
I'll stand next to you. I just need about four, four on each side. Close. All right. Thank you guys so much. I thank you back. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Hello. This is my first city council meeting.
Is it on?
Is it on? Yes.
Go ahead.
I moved to Plano in 84. There was nothing here. Now it's a city. But no, me and my wife loved the rec center, and I guess I got saved. I mean, they pulled me out of the water and brought me back to life, and I'm very, very grateful to everybody involved for that. I don't remember it. I woke up in the hospital, but, but yeah, you deserve the recognition. That was quite an effort. I was dead. And here I am, back in Plano. And I love it here, so. Thank you, thank you, and I'll be back at the rec center soon.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern, and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items, but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place item on a future agenda. And I do have four speakers this evening. The first one is Donna Macy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Donna Macy, Texas Medical Board, 216-800-1430. Objective: To receive support by adding this topic, "Justice for Gabby, Community Safety and Security," to the Plano Council agenda to be formally discussed, please. Goal, objective: Transparency of the animal, Plano Animal Control Policy Procedures and Process utilized in the decisions of the animal bites dogs deemed vicious dogs to the public. How this relates to serious injuries by its humans and deaths of pets from unregistered, unvaccinated dogs that run away after the attack? It has been 86 days since my family was attacked, seriously injured, and bitten by two stray dogs that attacked from behind, also biting my neighbor and killing my Gabby girl by unvaccinated, unregistered dogs that ran away. The Plano Animal Control hearing on May 17 was a revictimization of Mr. Steve Cooksey, Lynn Wilkins, and myself. House Bill 2127 does not affect the Texas Health and Safety Code, which contains the chapter on dangerous dogs, shelters, and rabies, so this can be discussed. Can I see a show of hands of how many people have been chased, bitten, attacked, dogs killed? In the U.S. 22 Census, 84 people were killed by animal bites in the U.S. I've spoken to numerous veterinarians, ER clinics, who are begging for the Plano Animal Control to engage. Having learned this, create ordinance for veterinarians to report Plano Animal Control on animals brought in and mauled, so as Plano Animal Control can respond expeditiously, to have owners fill out vicious dog attack affidavits and notarized. To expedite to obtain rabies status of the vicious dog for human bites in real time as opposed to have to wait 12 days or later. This is not subjective, as it has the propensity to be life or death of a human bite. Or painful, expensive, 38 expensive medical procedures rabies to the humans in interim as we wait. Gabby's ordinance. Solutions: Significant increased penalties, fines for irresponsible pet owners. Dogs are considered property, so how about getting a claim against property casualty loss for dogs or injure people, bite, kill pets, and run away? Police report? Personal injury? Homeowners? Insurers? Renters? How as a victim can we obtain the owner's information that is heavily protected by emergency veterinary clinics and Plano Animal Control? There is clearly a process missing here. Clearly. Gabby Alert on the Nextdoor app, or similar to the City of Plano Fix-It Alert, Fix-It app to alert community when and where loose animals are spotted in a timely, real-time effort. Give Plano Animal Control assist on this app to define proximity of animal with better efficiency and efficacy before harm or death occurs, to be proactive. Now that we know what does not work, let's proactively define ways to improve policy, process, and transparency to effectively create positive change in communication towards the community. When I asked what do we know about the Plano laws in Texas from everyone I've spoken to in the last...
Ms. Macy.
Tricky, murky, gray. Let's empower Plano Animal Control to improve transparency for policy and procedure. Let's educate the community on animal safety, recording and reassuring and gaining the trust from the community that something will be done. Plano Animal Control, visual presence in the community at the beautiful parks, pools, and nature parks that now most people are afraid to enjoy.
Ms. Macy.
Let this moment be the catalyst of change, so that we can enjoy our Plano again, the City of Excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me.
Bob Macy?
Mayor and Council, before the next speaker, the reference was made to House Bill 2127, and there is a lot about that bill that is still going to be resolved within the courts. We are actively monitoring the impacts of that bill, but it may take some time to know the exact impact of 2127, so just wanted to put that on your radar.
Hello, my name is Bob Macy. I reside in zip code 75023, and on April 28 of this year, my sister's family was attacked by two vicious pit bulldogs that were known to be numerous reports and numerous complaints. They were unregistered, they were unvaccinated. It resulted in injuries to Lynn, two broken teeth, requiring several facial reconstruction surgeries on her face. The neighbor who ran out to try to protect her wound up getting severely bitten and was required to undergo rabies shots, which he opted to take the chance and did not take the shots because of the fear of the pain. And he was involved with the Las Vegas shooting, where all the people he went with wound up getting shot and killed, so he already has PTSD, and this has completely set him back, and he hasn't even left the house, which is the reason he's not here because of all this. According to y'all's websites, there's 500 dog bites a year just in the City of Plano, but they say that it's much higher than that because a lot of them go unreported. Although it's required by Section 826041 of the Texas Health and Safety Code to report a dog bite, a lot of them are not reported. State Farm Insurance reports just in the City of Plano that they average a cost of $42,000 per dog bite in dog bites with their insured people. The dogs that were bit them were reported numerous times, and we can't understand why it continues to be a problem if they had been reported numerous times, why nothing was done up to that point to at least get them registered and at least get them vaccinated, but that wasn't done. Now, we went to several different meetings, and it just seemed like all the rights that the person who owned the dog, the vicious dogs, their rights were protected all the way. I mean, just leaning in that way, and we were basically just kind of hanging. It's like they cared so much for the person who owned the dogs, and us, we kind of just kind of left holding the bag. And the one thing that really, really was the most poignant part of it, when I asked, she was told to get rid of the dogs within 30 days. Well, I don't know what's going to happen in that 30 days. Is it going to escape again and bite more people during that 30 days? Who knows? You know, who knows? But the most poignant thing was when I asked, well, so you're saying as long as she gets it out of the city limits, even if you go three miles up the street into the City of Dallas and it winds up biting a kid, what would you say then? And I was told, "Not our problem."
Mr. Macy, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Rosback?
Good evening, members of the council and staff. I'm here tonight, again, addressing you after a month of intensive research on the loose and dangerous dog problem. You might recall I'm an engineer and an urban planner. I have communicated with over 50 residents about their experiences, dealing with dog attacks, dog bites, rabies shots, and finding and returning lost pets. I am saddened by the damage, physical, emotional, and financial, being caused by loose dogs in our city. Why is the loose and dangerous dog situation so important to Plano, not just individuals, but to the community? It is more prevalent than anyone knows, as many attacks and loose pets are never reported to Plano Animal Services. Leashed pets are often attacked by at-large dogs, and leash laws should be equitably enforced. Loose dogs are increasingly threatening people in public spaces. In the past month, there have been incidents at the Texas Pool, at Russell Creek Park, and on the trails. In no case was the owner found. Most times, when loose dogs attack, the victim has no way of finding the owner or the address of the dog, so Plano Animal Services doesn't do anything. Most of us cannot afford to be bitten by an unvaccinated dog. Rabies shots start at $10,000 a series and must be administered at the hospital. Rabies vaccinations for dogs are widely available and inexpensive. The city has a mandate, a Texas law, to control the spread of rabies, yet no one is monitoring the vaccination status of our pets. Loose dogs create the perception of unsafe streets, and they generate bad publicity. Quarantining and boarding dangerous and loose dogs eats up valuable shelter space for animals that are truly homeless. Not enforcing our ordinances for licensing, vaccination, and control of pets can result in serious liability for the city. There needs to be a concerted effort to educate the public on how to report dogs that are loose, or dogs that bite, and the laws that apply to all pet owners. Loose dogs hurt the vibrancy of our neighborhoods.
20 seconds.
More than anything else, your constituents want safe neighborhoods. I will once again send y'all this information and my research by email using the City of Plano website link. Please check your junk mail. I look forward to an opportunity to discuss loose and dangerous dogs with all of the city stakeholders and any of y'all who are interested. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Robert Pennell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Plano City Council, Plano City Manager, Senior Attorney. For the record, I am Robert Pennell, a 43-year Plano resident and the Secretary/Director of the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library, located in the Plano Downtown Historic District, hereafter known as the Museum and Library. I had promised your city secretary that I would only go two minutes and five seconds if I could stay on script. I'm going off script right now. What I have to say is very important to us in the Museum and Library, but it doesn't reach the significance of what happened at the Mullenbeck Rec Center, or dogs biting However, I am here for a purpose, and that purpose this evening is to inform the city council and city staff that the Museum and Library will appeal a relevant portion of the Heritage Commission's 2023-24 grant recommendation scheduled to be presented at the August 17 budget work session. The Museum and Library formally initiated the project, a process this past Friday, by providing an appeal informational packet to the city council liaison representatives to the Heritage Commission, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Two, and Councilmember Rick Adelie via electronic communication as recommended by city staff personnel. The city comprehensive planning manager, budget director, and executive assistant to the mayor and city council were simultaneously provided the appeal informational packet. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, the North Texas Masonic Historical Museum and Library neither faults nor criticizes the city planning staff for executing their duties as instructed or if city elected and appointed officials that volunteer to conduct and oversee city and commission business. If any organization can understand the obligation of responsibility and volunteerism, it's Freemasonry. It is indeed unfortunate that we must bring this appeal to your attention, but the Plano City Council appears to be the City Council appears to be the only elected body that can hear the facts, deliberate their merits, and hopefully resolve the issue in a favorable position. I must bring you up to date, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Isleson. Since sending this out last Friday, I have heard personally from Councilmember Rick Adeli and Mr. Bell, and they've asked me if I would be available to meet with them privately or however, and we said certainly I'm available, willing, and will make myself available between now and August the 17th, I think the date is. And we leave it in their hands and see where we go from now. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and for what you do for our city.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass the consent agenda with the exceptions of items A B, A D, A E, and A F.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those four items. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero.
Item A B, to approve the terms and conditions of an economic development incentive agreement for tax rebate for calendar years 2024 through 2031 by and between the city of Plano, Texas, a homural municipal corporation, and Core Weave Incorporated, a New Jersey corporation, and authorizing its execution by the city manager or his authorized designee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve item A B. Please vote. Motion passes seven with one abstention. Next item.
Item A D.
Item A D, to approve a contract with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Fairs in an amount not to exceed $147,475 for the homeless housing and services program under the Texas Government Code 2306.22585, designating the city manager as chief executive officer and authorized representative of the city for the purpose of executing the contract consistent with this resolution, giving required assurances, acting in connection with said contract, and providing required information, providing an effective date, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, I'm happy to consider items A D, A E, and A F as a block, so that Lisa doesn't have to read them all individually. But the suggestion was made, and I agree, I've expressed the same desire philosophically before, to add the language, "The city shall allocate a minimum of 95% of all funds received from the department to a local nonprofit organization or organizations that will act as the sub recipients to administer the funds in accordance with the ascribed purposes in this section." As I've brought this up here and there in the past, the idea is to enable our nonprofit community and nonprofit partners to pursue these the same way that we do with respect to the Buffington Grant System.
Staff is fine with that addition.
Then I'd like to make that as a motion to amend. Do we have to do this individually?
Can we do these three together or no? But you can make the motion and include all three.
Okay, then I'd like to formally make the motion to add to Section 1 of both, or of A D, A E, and item A F, quote, "The city shall allocate a minimum of 95% of all funds received from the department to a local nonprofit organization or organizations that will act as the sub recipients to administer the funds in accordance with the ascribed purposes in this section."
That was a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Second that motion.
Everybody understand the motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda, A D, A E, F, A F.
Mayor, before we continue, could I ask City Manager Isleson something here? As part of these, I think that's great. One thing that we've talked about previously was the problem with not having our own local Chodo. Is there anything else that we can do to make that happen? I see now that Salvation Army has stepped up to, you know, to help us with the issues except for that. Perhaps we could reach out to them to see if they would be willing to do something like that. That's number one. And number two is, for the last three years, we have, I don't want to say failed, we haven't been able to utilize, utilize all the funding that we had available, even though the number of people in need continues to increase. So I would like for us to put attention on that, to see what we could do to be certain that we don't lose those funds, because I think, I believe, we have a three-year, that we don't lose any more of those funds, and that we do utilize every penny that we have available to help people in need.
So Councilman, real quick, I have received an update from Lori Schwor just a couple of days ago. We still have Housing Channel available as a Chodo, but the other thing is, is that one of our other nonprofits in the area is exploring becoming a Chodo. So they are going through that process of considering it, and I'll just share, its Habitat for Humanity is looking at that. It is a process, it takes some time for us to be able to do that, but as you mentioned, there is that rollover effect. So Lori?
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear that this item has nothing to do with the Chodos. That's going to be our action plan item, that is under the individual consideration. On this one right here, this Salvation Army has stepped in as our partner in the rapid rehousing program. So they're just two separate pots of money. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's great, and again, if we can do whatever we can to be sure that we don't lose any available funds that we have to make these things happen for people in need.
Of course. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. A D, A E, A F. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests were received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to repeal and replace the parks, recreation, trails, and open space master plan, and providing a severability clause and an effective date.
Good evening, council. I'm Ron Smith, your Parks and Recreation Director. Earlier this evening, during preliminary open meeting, we presented information along with half and associates, our consultant, an overview of the proposed Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. Staff and the consultant are still at your disposal tonight to answer any questions that may be a result of this public hearing.
Thanks, Ron. Councilmember Holmer has a question?
Can I get clarification? Just east of Haggard Park, there is a little light blue area. Is that a proposed park?
Ron, I think it's Avenue L. Avenue L, just east of City Hall here, the municipal center, there's a small parcel that looks like it's a proposed park.
So in the downtown area, if I'm understanding correctly, just north of where, northeast of where we are right now, there are three parcels that the city owns two of those three, and we have them identified as a potential parkland for downtown. We understand that there is a huge need for more property in downtown, more open space. A little old Haggard Park is just doing the best that it can to meet the growing needs of the community, but we understand as a city and as a department that we need some more property in downtown, and that is three parcels that our internal staff and our planning department have recommended that we consider.
Can you explain to me the difference between proposed park land and private open space?
Yes, so we have some opportunities more frequently now than we have in the past where a developer will provide open space to their residents, whether that's of commercial use or residential use. Developers are learning more and more that open space is an amenity. It's a benefit, and so they build in open space in those developments that help attract their tenants, whether that's a residential or commercial. And so we have some opportunities where we negotiate or communicate with those developers that there are some opportunities where the developer will have open space that they deem publicly accessible, and we, as a department, make sure that that's codified in some sort of an agreement in the zoning or something like that, that makes sure that that property or that open space is going to be available to the public. We don't own it, we don't maintain it, that developer will, or whatever the land use agreement is, but it still provides a benefit to the public. There's a, an example would be, say, a splash pad that's built as part of a development, or just open space around a pond with trail, privately owned, but open to the public.
So this piece of land is owned by the city, by Parks, by the Parks Department? Is that correct?
Which?
The one I was asking about in the very beginning is, I'm trying to understand why we would designate as a proposed park versus, is there a difference between a proposed park and it just being park land, land that belongs to the city of Plano's Park Department? I just want to, what I'm getting at, I'm trying to make sure that we're not, and I realize that the park would be voted on later on, I just want to make sure that we aren't setting an expectation with the public that a park is going there if that's not something that we have already decided.
Sure, I understand. So the map, this is our best effort to try to identify parcels that are available or that could be identified as potential parkland. Nothing in this obligates the city to act on any of these that are identified as a potential park.
And I would say that these parcels have been acquired by the city. The department doesn't own land, the city owns land, but it is designated parkland, which makes it difficult to put as a different purpose. But the other thing that I would add in is that these locations in some ways have a little bit of flexibility, especially on the proposed side of things, and so staff will tell you that this is a general area of need designed to focus on some parcels, but there is also a little bit of flexibility on the proposed side of things.
Yeah, and I'm not in disagreement. I think that's a great location for a park. I just want to make sure, I know a lot of times, once we put things in writing and put them on a map and put it out to the public, then there's that expectation if someone was buying property or anything, they would say, oh, there's supposed to be a park there, and I didn't know if we're creating any problems for ourselves down the road by doing that.
I understand the concern. Thank you.
Do you want to hear the questions? Thanks, Ron. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers on this item.
All right. I'll close the public hearing, confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item number two, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2023-2 to amend the future land use map, the Parks Master Plan map, and bicycle transportation plan map of the Comprehensive Plan originally adopted by ordinance 2021-11-1, incorporating amendments related to the 2023 update of the Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor, council, and executives. I'm Christina Daye, the Director of Planning. I'm here with the comprehensive plan amendments that relate to the adoption of your new Parks, Recreation, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan that you just adopted. So I'll try to keep this short. As you know, you just adopted a new update to the Parks Plan for short. That happens every five years, and that is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. There is an action in the Parks and Recreation policy that talks about not only implementing the Parks Plan, but updating it specifically every five years. And so this is what the Parks Master Plan map looks like in the Comprehensive Plan. We incorporate it from the Parks Master Plan into the Comprehensive Plan verbatim. This does, this slide was created and drafted before we had that singular update that shows the shared use path moving from K Avenue to Municipal Avenue, so no, with the ordinance, we'll need to update that map. The bicycle transportation plan map also just directly translated from the Parks Master Plan into the Comprehensive Plan, and this is what it looks like with the Comp Plan banner. This is the one thing that you haven't seen so far, because the future land use map is exclusively in the Comprehensive Plan, not in the Parks Master Plan. So we've shown you the changes here, because the open space and social network categories of the Comprehensive Plan directly relate back to the Parks Master Plan, so you see the corresponding changes here. We change park boundaries and other conditions to relate to the changes in the Parks Master Plan. There are 13 associated changes, those were detailed in the staff report, and so I will not go through those, but we are available for questions you might have. This is the way the draft map then will look in the Comprehensive Plan. So there are three new maps that will be repealed and replaced in the Comprehensive Plan based on the update. P&amp;Z recommended this change by a vote of eight to zero, and Mike Bell, the Comprehensive Planning Manager, and I are both available for any questions you might have on this item.
Thanks, Christina. Any questions for staff? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Any speakers on this item?
There are no speakers on this item.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number two. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item three.
Item number three, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance as requested in Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2023-3 to amend the Comprehensive Plan originally adopted by ordinance 2021-11-1, incorporating amendments to the facilities and infrastructure policy, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Mike Bell, Comprehensive Planning Manager in the Planning Department. This item is an amendment to the facilities and infrastructure policy of the Comprehensive Plan. You can see the policy here on this slide, which states, "Plano will strategically plan and implement improvements to city facilities and infrastructure to ensure the necessary needs and services are provided to the community." As you'll see through the coming slides, these amendments are not so much to the policy itself, but really to the action statements that are associated with it in order to give more... in order to give more practical guidance, excuse me, to the Planning and Zoning Commission as it reviews the CIP each year. The reason for this need is, as cities are fast-growing, they're often map-based CIPs. So for instance, the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to make sure that new streets are being constructed in alignment with the Thoroughfare Plan Map, new parks are being placed in accordance with the Parks Master Plan Map, and so on. However, as these areas are now, these maps are mostly implemented and constructed, there's a need to switch from a more map-based approach to more of a strategic maintenance and operations planning perspective for the CIP review. It has come up in the last several years as that staff has somewhat struggled to make a direct connection between the CIP and the Comprehensive Plan because most of the CIP is really more maintenance at this point, and the really only guidance in the Comprehensive Plan is we're going to maintain our facilities. And so more practical guidance is needed. Some of the feedback from P&amp;Z is, well, this is great, but it's not telling us much. So we're proposing these amendments in order to give them better guidance, incorporate a lot of this that's actually already ongoing, city operations, and as a result, increase transparency in the process. So amendments to the policy itself, it's just simply to add the word assets. This was requested from the departments because there are some things covered in CIP that may not neatly fall into the term facilities and infrastructure, so it just gives us a broader term to work with. And then I'll start by summarizing the changes so you understand the context. These are all part of the facilities and infrastructure policy, which is under the Safety and Services component and the Social Environment pillar of the Comprehensive Plan. In total, there will be nine actions, four of which are new. One is slightly amended, and the others are exactly the same, just renumbered. So starting with Action One, this is amended, but essentially says the same thing, just in different words. And that is to maintain an asset management system to inventory the location, condition, and anticipate a lifespan of city facilities, assets, and infrastructure. The city is already doing this through its Cartograph software, which is really neat. Not only does the location, we can do the year installed, anticipate a lifespan, condition. So we already have this system in place today. Action Number Two is to use that data from the asset management system in three ways. One is to strategically plan for proactive maintenance, repair, and replacement of city infrastructure. Two is to assess the adequacy and future needs in potential growth and redevelopment locations. So we're not just replacing everything with what's on the ground today. There may be some need to upgrade based on anticipated growth. And then lastly, to develop long-term public strategies to balance the need for timely and cost-effective maintenance with other efforts to revitalize identified growth and redevelopment locations. Number Three is to maintain the CIP as a five-year guide to planning, building, operating, and maintaining capital projects and adopt the first year as part of the annual budget. This is something that, again, that is existing practice. It was formally an action in the Comprehensive Plan. We're simply putting it back in. And that leads to the next action, which is really the practical guidance that we're getting towards, is reviewing that five-year CIP annually with the Planning and Zoning Commission to ensure that projects and programs are aligned with the Comp Plan and other master plans. And in doing so, there are a number of priorities, which, again, this is how we can tie the projects and programs to the Comprehensive Plan. One is that the project addresses issues in adequacy or needs in the city. We're identified by that asset management system, so we have identified areas that are in some condition that need to be replaced. B, that they provide proactive maintenance that, if not addressed, would likely result in more costly or extensive repairs in the future. Third, that it constructs those incomplete or not-yet-built aspects of the Thoroughfare Plan or bike plan. There are still a few out there. D, that it promotes some strategic objective of the Facilities Master Plan, Parks Plan, Public Works Master Plan, Small Area Plans, such as Invision Oak Point, or other adopted master plans. E, that it promotes an economic development objective as defined by city plans. F, that it implements technology improvements or innovative solutions to support city facilities and operations. And lastly, that it coordinates with private reinvestment in preferred growth and redevelopment locations. And the last new action is Action Five, and this is meant to be more holistic, that in preparing the CIP, project selection should consider asset conditions, equitable distribution, environmental impacts, resiliency and sustainability, long-term health and safety benefits, and cost effectiveness. And then this is meant to be holistic and looking at, sure, we're being good stewards of infrastructure for future generations. And then lastly are those existing actions that have been renumbered. I won't cover those. Those are exactly the same, just with renumbering. And that concludes my presentation. There was no public feedback on this item. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval eight to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this item? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Number Three. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item Number Four, Public Hearing and Consideration of a Resolution to Adopt the 2023-2024 Action Plan, Including the Summary of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Activities and Proposed Use of Funds for the Program Year 2023-2024 and Providing an Effective Date.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Executives. My name is Shannet Eden. I am the Housing and Community Services Manager, here to present our 2023-24 HUD Action Plan, HUD, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. All right. So we've been receiving, we as in the City of Plano has been receiving HUD funds for quite a while, as you can see here. We've received Community Development Block Grant Funds for goodness, 38 years, and home funds, as you can see, for 20 years. We have helped thousands of Plano residents with either repairing their homes, obtaining a new home, moving to Plano and having a new home here in Plano, or just with countless social service activities that help their youth or seniors, just general population that's in need, low to moderate income. So this slide is here to explain to you HUD's complicated process. So every five years, we receive funding, we receive funding from HUD every year. But every five years, HUD says you've got to prepare a consolidated plan. It's a five-year consolidated plan that discusses what activities we think we would like to do over the next five years in order, and through the use of their funds. So what the actual name is, it's a five-year consolidated plan of housing and community development needs. The activities in that five-year plan are obtained from countless public outreach, public meetings that we have, and just surveys that we have to our general population. So after that five-year plan is submitted, what HUD says is you have to create an annual action plan each year. Although the five-year plan estimates money, the annual action plan says this is exactly what HUD's going to give us over the next year, and this is how we're going to actually use those funds. We are currently in year three of the five-year plan. So we've only completed two years. Year three, as you can see here, will end on the 23rd, I mean, on September 30th. But year four, which is what this action plan is for tonight, is actually starting on October 1st. All right, so when we look at our HUD funds, they've been pretty consistent over the last few years, as you can see. Our CDBG dollars increased this year by about $32,000, whereas our home dollars increased or decreased about $13,000. But overall, we average about 1.4 million or so in CDBG annually that we receive from HUD or that they set aside for us, and about 600 of late from HUD on home funding. So let's talk about the proposed activities for this next year that starts October 1st. We've got the Housing Rehabilitation Program. This is a city-run program, and we are planning to assist Plano's low-to-moderate-income residents in repairing their homes, as well as that includes tear-down and rebuild and emergency, so HVAC activities such as that, or sewer lines. We have a lot of sewer line issues here in Plano. And so we replace cast-iron pipes, and that is considered an emergency. We also have our First-Time Home Buyer Program and assistance. I want to make sure that you all saw when you were looking at this document, there's only $8,000 associated with this program because we're not asking for this year there to be any new allocations in first-time home, first-time home buyer down payment assistance and/or closing costs because, as you know, we didn't have any last year. So that means we still have that allocation. So the small amount of money that is there is to assist in teaching our first-time home buyer class to people that come. We have that class 11 months in a year. We don't do it in December, as well as in underwriting. Because, for example, right now, we have approved six applicants that are looking for homes in Plano. But even though we've approved them, doesn't mean they're going to find homes for us to be able, that they can afford within their range for us to approve them and actually give them the money, either the closing or the down payment assistance. Next, we have, under our HUD Objective of Decent Housing, we have Habitat for Humanity. They came and asked $45,000 this year to assist them in repairing a new home. And that is, they received almost all the funding, so that's going to assist them. Then, under the HUD Objective of Sued Living, as you can see here, we still partner with the Assistance Center of Collin County. All of these funds go to the Assistance Center of Collin County to provide rent and utility assistance. It's funded with CDBG funds. HUD regulations state that we can help someone for a maximum of three months, but it's three consecutive months, up to 100% of their utilities and/or their rent. All right, City House is here, and they are, they are coming to provide assistance to our youth, our 18 to 22 population youth here that are homeless. City House has three transitional homes here scattered throughout our city. And so this CDBG funding will assist them in here. You will also see them again on August 17th because the commission is recommending them for another small portion, about an equivalent amount of funding in the Buffington Community Service Grant. We have Texas Muslim Women's Foundation. They are a former recipient from last year. That is to fund their peace in the home operations. So they will be providing assistance to survivors of domestic violence, both shelter, counseling services, just as you can see on this slide. The next proposal is to fund the Samaritan Inn. You all have traditionally seen them in the Buffington Community Service Grant. And the commission discussed this year of recommending them for CDBG funding because they recognize that in our action plan, or in our, we have the action plan, as well, we have a consolidated annual performance report that comes in December. This report here only talks about community development and block grant funds. It doesn't take into account that the city uses its own general fund dollars to fund Samaritan Inn. So the assistance at the Samaritan Inn is funded with BCSG dollars in the past. We don't get to count that towards HUD. So they said this year, they're going to recommend that you all fund them out of the HUD funding to help make sure that we assist the homeless shelter, we meet the homeless shelter goals set out. Family Place is a return agency. They provide counseling. They actually go to homeless shelters and provide counseling to families that have been affected by domestic violence. Final one is My Possibilities. So My Possibilities is doing a public facility improvement. They are located here in Plano. I believe that a lot of people know where they are. You all probably know their location. But they've come for security improvements. The good thing about this is the, the funding that they are using is a portion of CDBG dollars that we have a lot of. So we'll talk about this, and I can answer this. When you're looking at our 1.4 million in CDBG funds, HUD says that only 15% of that allocation can be used on social services. It then says 20% can be used on admin, but the remaining 65%, my math is right, thinking offhand, the remaining 65% is used for some type of either public facility or housing rehab. We are not able to use these funds for just direct new, new housing. We can't create new housing with these funds unless we have a CBDO. The city doesn't have one of those. We have yet to have one in our 38 years. So, but it's good because My Possibilities will be doing their public facility. So as you all know, there's a public hearing coming up next, but I am most definitely available for questions.
Thank you, Shannet. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Well done. I'll open the public hearing. Any speakers?
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council. No, go ahead, Councilman Williams.
Just to let everybody know where I'm coming from in the vote, as long as I've served on this council, we've, around this time every year, we've looked at issues pertaining to the receipt and distribution of the CDBG and home funds. And in my estimation, and being a HUD recipient at all, I, I'm told that it would cause issues if we tabled this item to revisit it. So I simply intend on voting no. Just wanted to explain my vote.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of want some explanation of why tabling it would cause an issue.
So we have to submit a plan to HUD by August 15th. On August 15th, HUD then has their time to review. In order to ensure that we can have funding start October 1st, you'd have to approve it tonight. Let's say if it was tabled, then we wouldn't have that funding. And what that would mean is we would be telling any organization that has listed, you've heard tonight, or that you've heard me speak about tonight, that they cannot start their program until we get, until we apply to HUD and they actually take it. HUD needs 45 days for their approval. Statutorily.
Mayor, pro tip.
So I do intend to support this tonight, but I would just like to make a comment since I think this is my sixth time to vote on this. And each, each year, we, we see that there are certain goals that we're not achieving. And I'm a very goal-oriented person, and I like us to achieve our goals. So my, my comment on that is, I know there's some real challenges and reasons why we can't achieve those. But if we can't, I would like us to come up with an action plan that we think is achievable because I struggle with the fact that we come back each year and we have to explain why we aren't achieving our goals. And it seems like we keep doing that year after year. And so that's, that's hard for me, that we keep coming up with a plan that's unachievable.
Could I address it? One of the things that we have been able to do is get some, some suggestions from one of our CRC members to pursue some nonprofits that may be able to meet some of our goals, especially for transportation, which is a very difficult one. We have not had applicants for that. So Shannet and I intend to go and visit with these nonprofits and see if we can get them to apply for next year.
And Lori, on the five-year plan, I wanted to just double-check. We begin that process, since it's based on fiscal year. We'll begin that process of drafting and public input. Is it, it's next year?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Okay, just double-check.
This time next year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Councilmember Riccadelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. So just a quick question, and thank you for this, this great report. We've had this conversation some in the past, and I know there are percentages that HUD requires for various activities. Obviously, you know, a very significant portion, maybe the majority of these funds, are going to housing rehabilitation versus other types of programs that are valuable in the community. Shannet, you covered, you know, the amount that we can use for social services, the amount we can use for administrative. Could you remind me, does that, does that cap also apply to something like tenant-based rental assistance versus housing rehabilitation? Or how do we end up with the allocation the way we have it?
So HUD doesn't allow you to fund tenant-based rental assistance out of community development block grant funding. But you've, you got it. They allow you to fund it out of home funds. And so right now, we have a current funded tenant-based rental assistance funded out of the home American, American Rescue Plan funds. So it still is part of home, but that's the only way you can fund it. And so what HUD calls our homelessness prevention, they call it subsistence payments. And they have strict rules that subsistence payments, ooh, excuse me, have to be three consecutive months, and that's it, with CDBG.
Okay, gotcha. Well, thank you for that. So just to understand, so I understand we can't, so for CDBG, we could not do the tenant-based rental assistance. Obviously, I know there's the 15% cap on social services. We have the cap on administrative as well. So if we were not doing the lion's share of this for housing rehabilitation, the way that we are, what, what would those funds be used for? You know, which of these other categories would we legally be able to increase if we, if we were to say we want to shift some of it from here to there?
So the categories, the areas that you saw tonight?
You know, like we've got, we've got housing rehabilitation, you know, obviously, you know, like you look at homelessness prevention is a category, supply of units, homeless shelter and services. Are, are all of those within that social services umbrella?
They are. The only one that isn't is Habitat for Humanity. You all, last year, actually...
And then the public services facilities that you talked about with My Possibilities, right?
Yep.
Those, okay, perfect.
Those two.
Okay, gotcha.
In the past, you all have funded, you all have funded programs that improved multifamily elderly units. So you all have done things, but it's all been based on who, what agencies are coming requesting funds. And so it just depends on who's requesting the funds. But yes, you could do that. You all have added new shelter beds through funding Agape Information and Resources. They did a conversion, which was wonderful because it comes out of that 65% that we're talking about.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Well, thank you for that information, Shanette. I just wanted to make sure because, you know, it's kind of typically the lion's share goes to housing rehabilitation, and you see these other categories getting a lot less that are also doing very important things, but that's because of HUD regulations. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are. And housing rehab can be any organization. So just so that you know, in the past Habitat, like they've done today, Habitat can do home rehab with their funding, as well as you all have funded other organizations in the past to do the same thing, rebuilding together. That's what I'm being remiss.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you for those reminders. I feel like maybe we've had that discussion in prior years, but it's good to, good to get a refresher on how all of the HUD regulations interact with how we break down the funding, you know, for each program. So thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Uh, thank you, Eric. Shanette, as I recall, when you were here back in March, I believe, we were, we were talking about this, and I think following up on, on Councilmember Riccadelli's statement that, you know, you can't use the funds for direct rehab, you know, when, or was it rent? Anyway, there was one thing that we couldn't use it for, for assistance. And I'd ask about, well, we can't do that, but what about, we can help with utility payments? Is that correct? That would be something that's, that's doable? So, so my question is, with, with that in mind, because let's face it, it's not getting, you know, any, any less expensive for utilities. Of the grant recipients that we have listed here, which one or ones would be able to assist with utility reimbursement or assistance for people? And, because sometimes that can prevent homelessness as well.
Agreed. Um, the Assistance Center of Collin County, they run the homelessness prevention program, and they can pay, someone can come and only need utility assistance. They can pay 100% of the utility assistance for that resident that's income eligible.
Okay. And what, what level of funding are they receiving from, for this program?
$122,000.
122, okay. Would, is there a possibility at this point that, other than 122, could funds still be perhaps reallocated from some place that may not have been able to utilize all the funds, as we were talking about earlier, for assistance before, before this gets finalized to readjust and put some of the funds for someone that could provide util, more utility assistance, especially maybe, you know, for, you know, senior housing? That would be, I would pretty well say would be 100% utilized if we could reallocate and be sure that there's additional funds for that, that purpose.
So the prob, there's, the concern with reallocating right now, and in this process, is that we've maxed out the 15% cap. And so if you would like to add more funding to that program that they're running, you would have to take it from one of the other social service agencies listed in the report.
That's what I was asking you.
So, so...
For instance, I see one of the, not to pick, but My Possibilities, you were saying they, they do security, something improvement facilities or whatever. I'm not sure exactly what, what that entails, but, you know, perhaps we don't need $116,000 in security improvement. I mean, they do great work, and, and they, they deserve, you know, all the help that we, that we give them. But I, I'm just concerned, again, that we may not be fully utilizing to the best of our ability the funds that we have to help people. And again, I get back to utilities, those are things that we cannot do, but we can help, you know, with, with utility payments. I just, I'd like to be sure that we're maxing, if we have to readjust something here or there, that's what I'm looking for, input is where, where we could do that.
So My Possibilities is funded out of that 65%.
Mm-hmm.
So we wouldn't be able to adjust funding from My Possibilities and put it over...
I was using the other example because they stand out in terms of the dollar amounts of the others that we have there.
But you can adjust within the public service agencies. But I, I do want to remind you of two things. One, we have our Home Art Program, Program right now, which, as I mentioned to you all back in probably March, I mentioned that you can't pay only utilities. However, utilities can be paid as a side of paying someone's rent. And so we are able to do that. The other thing is, the benefit of working with the Assistance Center of Collin County with homelessness prevention is that we know they get a TXU grant. So as our funding runs out and people are coming needing electricity assistance...
Right.
We, not we, they do. Their caseworker will actually send people and qualify them for their TXU grant. So it's a great expansion utilization of both resources. So it supplements or will offset for our Plano residents a lot of times because they have that separate grant.
Okay. Well, good. I just, like I said, I just, I didn't, didn't hear or see anything about that. I know we had talked about it at pretty good length, as I'm doing tonight. Everybody's probably tired of hearing about it, but the utilities, to me, that's an important issue because I, I, I know how that could hurt people, and it's, it's not going to get any better. So any thought we could do that, or somehow to, you know, to help with that a little bit better would be, would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Horne?
Thank you for the great presentation. I was looking at your summary documents here, and it looks like over the past three years, we're getting ballpark between the home and also the, the other account, about $2 million a year. That's what we're getting. And now we're going to our third year, so we're looking about having a ballpark figure, about $6 million that we accumulated over the, the three years. Of that amount of money, do we have anything left over? Have we spent all of it accordingly to serve the homeless as best we can? Can you give me any information on that?
So with regards to serving homelessness, or home, those that are homeless, actually, we have maxed out every year on using that social service money. I believe we have one of these documents. The, in the memo that you all were provided, it states that there is $134,974 that are unallocated in community development block grant funds. But that falls under that big 65%. Ways that we could use that for those that are homeless would be if we had a nonprofit, say, like they did two to three years ago. We want to create new beds. We want to, for instance, the, the former agency, Agape Information and Resources, they took two of their administrative units. They owned a quadplex. They converted them into units. So we were able to add to the new beds. That can't, comes out of that big pot of money. Whereas funding just public social service agencies, it won't come out of that. Anything that's related to homeless, that's not tenant-based rental assistance, but is focused on the creation of adding beds or either improving their public facility, because all of our shelters are public facilities, so they can come through. It still takes out of the big pot that I'm talking about and that we have money in that's remaining, so.
So in case we have, over the course of five years, we didn't spend all the money, do we have to return it back to HUD?
So we have, with HUD funding, we have 10 years to spend it. So HUD's a little bit different than home money. Home money, we have five years to spend. CDBG, we have 10 years. We haven't been in a situation, as you're saying, where we would even get close to needing to, to spend the money because, because we've spent it. HUD says, for instance, that at any given time, and it's August the 15th, I believe, they do what they call a timeliness test. At any given time in the year, they can do it, but they, make sure they do it August 15. We cannot have more than $1.5 million of our CDBG allocation resting in what they call our bank account. Right now, our percentage is .51. It's, it's, it's very small. So we always use the money. We've never been in a situation like that. And if you all, if I may, if y'all are thinking about home monies, and the home money is the same thing. What would happen is, is, let's say it's year four, and we have home monies that we haven't spent. We would reach out to HUD, and we would ask them to extend the period. And HUD will and has, for other cities, our sister cities, they will extend the period to use the funds and allow us the time because they don't want to have to rec, unallocate funding that they've allocated to us just as much as we don't want them.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mayor. So as we've had this discussion, I think it's, it's pretty clear that, that, you know, I think the council, and I think y'all as well, would like to be doing more of the social service activities that we're capped at 15% at. And, you know, obviously, then within the 65%, we're doing some very important things, but I think we're doing an amount of, you know, say, housing rehabilitation, that's obviously, you know, disproportionate to what we're doing of the social services, just because 65% is so much more than 15%. So thinking strategically about how we can help the great social service agencies in our community, now that we know that kind of capital infrastructure project like security at My Possibilities, or adding additional beds at a homeless shelter can go in the 65% rather than the 15% for social services, maybe next year, you know, before we create these allocations, we might want to survey all of these great social service agencies that are part of the 15% and say, what capital infrastructure projects do you have that we could maybe put in the 65%? Because, like we've done for My Possibilities, because if we can do that for them, then their funds are not restricted the way federal funds are. That might free up money they were planning to use for a capital infrastructure project to provide social services in our community, and, and that way, we might kind of get around the 15% cap, if that makes sense. So, yeah, ju, just an idea. I'd love to see us do that, you know, in preparation for next year's item. So, thank y'all.
Councilmember Holmer?
Thank you, Mayor. I know these dollars are really important, and I don't want to hold up getting them out to, to serve the public. Obviously, Councilmember Williams has concerns enough that he, he doesn't want to vote to support this, and, and Mayor Proton Prince also has concerns about us setting some goals or action plans in place. And I'm wondering if, and as does Deputy Mayor Proton too, I guess, I feel like we keep having the same conversation, and it gives me some indigestion to approve this without getting an action plan. I don't know if it's appropriate to make it as part of the motion to, to approve, or if we can't table it.
So Lori, can you discuss the process for amending the action plan kind of on a going forward basis?
Sure. So if we were looking at amending the five-year consolidated plan, that would be considered a substantial amendment. You have done a substantial amendment to this plan already because of COVID. So that ended up changing quite a few programs because we got additional dollars. So what that would need to have is an outreach opportunity for the public. All of these needs were written as part of that outreach effort that we did originally. And then there has to be a publication date, so we have to have it published for 30 days. And then we would have another public hearing, much like we've done tonight, but that would be for the five-year consolidated plan.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm not sure that's exactly what I meant. I, I think maybe I'm looking more to, to Councilmember Williams and Prince for specifically what, I mean, I understand you're not in support of this, but maybe you don't...
But the goal, the goals that we have set, that we're achieving in the action plan, can you discuss how that falls in, folds into the consolidated plan, and then how these processes? Because what, what I'm hearing is, they want more tangible goals that we're achieving on an annual basis.
So we do have the five-year plan that has the goals that are already stated in there. And if you're trying to get more specific about trying to hit certain targets, is that what the understanding is as far as the action plan is concerned? I think that would be a little more, I, I don't know, I'm going to have to look to Shanette for that, but our, one of the things that was brought to our attention is the concerns about not meeting certain targets in particular areas. So because we have pretty much managed through a lot of our COVID programs, which took quite a lot of staff time for the last three years, what we understand from council, both from March and also from this evening, is, is that we need to do a concerted effort for outreach. And that is something that the staff wrote into the action plan, that we are going to be approaching nonprofits to help us meet those goals. So that is something that was written in this year. We did listen, and we, we heard that that is a concern from council. It's also a concern for us because we don't see those folks coming forward. And what we may have to do is those, a lot of those organizations don't exist here in Plano. We are going to have to go to the Metroplex to look for some of these nonprofits, to see whether or not they would come to Plano to serve Plano residents. So if there are other organizations that you are aware of, that is, you know, that are local, that can meet those particular needs, we would be happy to outreach to them. I think for the both of us, we had already discussed that this is a goal for us because we obviously have heard the concerns about not meeting those particular goals. It's been something that showed up year after year. In our community roundtables that we had, when we were talking to all of our nonprofit organizations, these still remain holes. Our, our nonprofit partners are not serving certain things, certain needs here in our community. So we're going to have to make a concerted effort to see if we can get people to come to Plano to serve those needs.
Lori, I, I, I think that it's really not a good idea not to take federal funds. Okay, I mean, obviously, it's free money, and we need it for our homeless. I, I think the concern here is not that, you know, we're opposed to the grant, and we're opposed to getting the money to help our homeless, but rather the concern that there's been ongoing issues and concerns about our obje, are we reaching our objective? Are we reaching our goal? And, you know, if not, how can we, how can we improve? Unfortunately, if you pretty much tie our hands by saying, today is the last day. If we don't approve it, that's, that's it. We don't really have any flexibility in offering any suggestions. I, I get it that you guys came in March, and we talked about this, but during that time, I think Councilwoman Grady basically monopolized all the, all the time about, about the funds. And so I, I would really like to see, you know, next year, that you put aside some time for us to possibly go through the, the changes, the act, the draft for action plan. If it's 30 days, that's what we need, then let's schedule for 60 days. And then to see if there is any need for a change of resolution or a change of plan. I mean, if there isn't, there isn't. If there is a reality that we just can't get whatever it is that we need to get in order to reach our goal, let's talk about it. I mean, and if there is a need for consultant, let's talk about that too. But I, I don't like the fact that we're at the last day, and if we don't approve it today, then, you know, we don't get the money. I, I don't like that either. So that's my suggestion for next, next time around. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, and this is typically the date that we come. It's usually that, the, the same week that you're hearing your budget, but we will absolutely take that into account and make sure that we adjust all the other timelines with CRC in order to make sure that can happen for you.
Counsel, we'll have this on a June preliminary open so that we're at least a month in advance next year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve agenda item number four. Please vote. Motion passes seven to one. Your no further business? We're adjourned.[1771.11][1771.11]